Yeah, that would be a challenge right there.
So is this the hot seat right here?
I'll let you have access to the computer there and...
Excellent. So how are you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm doing good.
Graduate student didn't make it down today?
He didn't. He didn't make it today. He gave this very similar presentation he used for his master's thesis. So he had a number of other academics in the class. His name is Pedro. His name is right here. He was with me last time I was here.
Then when we went and looked at the warehouse's research.
Yeah, he was there too. Exactly. He was great. Well, I certainly appreciate this opportunity to meet with you guys and be able to share some of the work that you've been doing. I think from a professional perspective, we really like this type of a project because it has some real practical applications to it. And we can see how it could be, how it can grow, how it can get stunted, and it's sort of a dynamic type of a project. We like that piece right there. I think from a personal perspective, I like this project as well. My dad was an elevator superintendent for ADM for a number of years before he retired. I was actually a grain merchant earlier in my career. So the combination of two really kind of fit nicely for me here from a professional perspective. So I think from a personal and both a professional, this is a very enjoyable project to work on. So thank you guys for the opportunity. So what it is we have here, our title here is a decision to invest in a shuttle train loading facility. It's the case of Stafford County, Kansas, in this case. Myself, Keith Harris, and Pedro Masie, the graduate student who worked on this as well. What we're going to do today in terms of kind of following this piece... Oh, I forgot to give you something here. I have a slide presentation for each as well. So I just need to have notes.
Thank you.
And I've also provided an executive summary for you to read and feel like giving you a little bit more. And there'll be another company report later on with much more details. That's just a one-page or just sort of summary. So from a roadmap perspective, where we're going to go today is we want to talk about just a little bit of background which you guys are very familiar with, but also the purpose of the study. And we want to kind of look at certain methods that we use in order to be able to assess financial feasibility in this case. We want to go over some of the data, the sources of information. We want to get into the operational cost as well, what it costs to run this operation from a daily basis. And then we drop that down into sort of a income statement so you can see more numbers. Carry out a little bit more financial analysis and then a recommendation of the future considerations as we come into this year. I think this will work absolutely best if you guys see something that you want to stop and talk to me about. Say, Keith, let's talk on this. If you're not clear enough here, or let's elaborate on that a little bit more. So feel free to do that. And Kurt, Clayton, and Todd, there may come a slide where I'm going to say, hey, what do you guys think about this? Because I want to see this as a collaborative process. So as you guys know, particularly with the background of this project, we know that the grain shuttle loading facilities have gotten quite popular in the United States, particularly in Kansas, in Iowa, in Nebraska, as well as Montana in that matter. But we also know that there's been some grain companies, multinational in some cases, that have looked in this area and have decided to invest in other places. So we want to understand that a little bit more. What is it that moved them into a different direction? What was that gap that is that had them to look somewhere else instead of here, right? And then after understanding that gap, they want to be able to understand what does it take potentially to maybe overcome that gap? Maybe some other opportunities that might kind of narrow that gap a little bit. So that's kind of the background on it. So when we look at this infrastructure for grain shoveling loading facility, we want to start off with, we're looking at this from a facility that would be loading and unloading both rail and truck for that matter. High-speed type of equipment that is, right? When we look at these shuttle loading facilities, guys, we're talking about 110, 120 car, unit cars in some cases, right? You can go down as low as 70 in many cases, but they've gotten to a point now where they're 110, 120 rail cars. We need that high-speed loading and unloading capability to take advantage of the railroad's assets. And that is key partner in this, and we'll talk about that a little bit later here. But servicing primarily bulk agricultural markets. The proposed facility of what we see here, guys, is we're seeing a $2 million, I'm sorry, $2 million bushel capacity facility in this case. One that can load wheat, corn, and it could be constructed in manners of steel or concrete. And the capital expenditure in this case, we're looking at a $16 million to $20 million investment in this case. Which leads us to the question, something that we can kind of focus on here. You know, what are the investment options for a shuttle train facility in Stafford County, Kansas? What are those investment options? And even make it even simpler in this case, at least simple at least for me in this case, does it make sense? Is it affordable? And when will the return be sufficient? Those are just some basic questions that we sort of kind of came out of this. But they all fold into that very one. What are those investment options for the shuttle train facility in Stafford County, Kansas? Our objective in this case, Todd, we want to be able to identify the determinative factors for public-private investment through the grain shoveling facility. Clayton, we wanted to also determine the economic feasibility of such investment. Those are objectives. And we feel if we can answer those, if we can get to those objectives, we'll be able to come close, if not answer, Kurt, the actual question that we have here. Now, we use a number of different methods here in terms of being able to calculate financial feasibility. And this is one of them, and this is the primary one that we use. And we use to call this the net present value. This is an age-old type of a formula in this case that helps business decisions on whether to invest or not. And to maybe explain this, if you look at the net present value calculation here, that C sub zero, which is the capital expenditure cost, that begins to be sort of that initial investment, right? Let's say you're going to invest $10 million, for example. That would be that initial investment. Then we look at C sub T, that is the net cash flows or outflows for any period of time. So when we make an investment, we know that at some point in time, year one, two, and three, we're going to get some cash flows coming in, right? We're going to get revenue coming in. We're going to get income coming in. But because they come out to us from year one, a million dollars, two, $200,000, three, whatever that number is, if we look at all that out to like a 10-year period, for example, assuming that might be the investment horizon in this case, we're expecting a payback, then what we have to do is we have to take those cash values and we have to bring them back to a present value in this case. So in some cases, we're going to have to discount them. So to make that even clearer hopefully is that if you've got an $8 million investment, or a $10 million investment, I should say, and you get these cash flows, right? We want to add up all those cash flows, discount those cash flows to come back to a present value. And if the initial investment was $10 million and our discounted cash flows are $8 million, that's not a good investment. We're in the red here. If we get those cash flows discounted back to us in a present value at $10 million and $2, that's a positive investment here. We just want it to be a positive, a positive relationship as opposed to a negative relationship. So that's what we were going to be doing in this case as well. We also did some other type of analysis as well. We pulled that for the paper that was published and things like that. But we also got anything, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, competition, the competition in the area, the concentration of activities going in the area. We wanted to take a look at all those factors to come up with some understanding in terms of whether or not this investment is a good investment for us. So data. So Kurt, in this case, let's take a look at the very top here. We had to take a look at a lot of the cash prices right here in Stafford County. We're going to get that information on wheat and corn. We looked at it for over a 10-year period in that case. For wheat and corn, we were able to get that from some secondary data company, USDA, right? USDA is good at collecting data, right? But we wanted to take advantage of that piece right there. As such, so we got that from USDA. We also have to take a look at freight rates for that matter as well. Freight is a very important component to what we're doing here in this case. So we want to take a look at freight rates, particularly from here, this region, all the way to the Gulf, which is particularly where the exporting will take place for the most part. And we could take a look at the Pacific Northwest or Long Beach, California, which are also locations in which you can export. But we kind of, to narrow our focus here, we just did it from this area to the Gulf. And we were able to look at USDA, this is the grain transportation report there. And it gives an idea of tariff rates, it gives an idea of fuel surcharges, all those things that make up the freight costs. And we'll have to say too, this may be a little bit a very conservative number. In fact, because the numbers that are posted are maybe on the higher end of things. Some of the rail companies or some of the multinationals, they get other deals that we don't see, right? So they get other better freight rates that we don't see. And the rail wasn't that good in working with people that deal in hypothetical situations, right? If we had something very concrete, we could probably get a different rate. But we ended up going with the upper rate here because of the study itself was more hypothetical than their minds. We also looked at operational costs. We were able to look at some internal type values to get that type of information. Internal reports, secondary reports, things of that nature. Volume. We had to, volume, we had to do a lot of talking to kind of get a feel for understanding what the volume is. The discount rate, we would get that from the Federal Reserve. And we had a number of different interviews also. Also, which also makes us, I think, a very interesting study here is that the people that we interviewed along the way also. You can look at the list there all the way down from, starting from MKC all the way to ADM. And just take a look in this case of the data that we're able to get from them. Like say, for example, at MKC, we're looking at what are the profit margins that we should expect coming from something like this? What are the volume that is necessary in order to make this work? What are the costs, operational costs? How often should our inventory be turned over for that matter? What is an acceptable payback period that multinational grain companies would be willing to accept? And trading mix, how much of this is, how much of you are you trading or how much of you are storing it for that matter? How much of it is wheat and how much of it is corn? So given that, we talked to a number of different firms. O'Neill Consulting was a big part of this as well, provided us some very similar data in this case. Wind River Grain, Pawnee Co-op, for example. Gave us information. Stafford County Mill, Continental Grain and Barge, ADM. So we got a lot of different type of insights. So, which was good because you can see reports from USDA for that matter. But Kurt, it's also good to have somebody to validate that. Where you can have somebody to say something from an interview, but it's good to have the USDA number to validate that, right? So we have this method here where we could just take a look at a lot of different input and verify if our data was accurate in that case. Now, here are some of the factors that we found to be very important when we're looking at making an investment in a shuttle loading facility. And a lot of this information comes from communities in Montana, again, and Iowa and Nebraska, as well as Kansas as well. What are the factors that are necessary in order to really look at this piece here? So let's take a look at some of the risk factors in the very left-hand column there, starting with the volume traded. And then we're going to look at, you know, how significant it is and what is the type of risk in this case. So in the case of volume traded, a very, very important factor. That's one of the factors we saw from every study that we've seen in terms of how you make this sort of project viable, financially viable or financially feasible in this case. So we made this a very high, high significant in that case. From the value, we look at a risk type here, it's the value chain, right? Because it's going to involve more than one firm to get the volume there, right? You have the farmers, you have the elevators for that matter, corpers for that matter, as well as the origination piece. So you have a whole value chain involved in making that volume piece work. A supplier relationship, that's also very high in this case. Again, because you need to have, because that grain elevator, it needs to have that, in that case, the country elevator that's involved as well. Very high, and that's also a value chain relationship. Commodity prices, commodity price spreads, and we're looking at prices from the US, I'm sorry, from this area to the Gulf for that matter, just kind of look at those price spreads might be. So we have that as being significant and more of a market-related here. Of course, we can look at the market-related ones and saying this may present some areas of volatility. So we have to do a little bit more sensitivity analysis on that to show that things may go down sideways for that matter. Transportation costs, which we talked about a little bit more, a very important piece. That's also a market risk in this case. Competition, also a very high piece as well. That's also a market type of risk that we're facing. The capital structure, whether you're going to use some type of debt financing or equity financing is an important piece of this. Interest rates, carrier relationship, management and labor, public-private partnership. So these are pretty much rated from very high to very low in terms of the risk factor in this case. So I'm curious, what do you guys, what do you think about this piece right here relative to Stafford? Do you have any thoughts on that you can share with us that might be...
The significance of being low in management and labor, you just don't think it would be hard to find the people to do the work right here?
Primarily. Primarily. That's something that could be outsourced as well for that matter, right? What we found going through the study is that, you know, there are a number of guys that would, multinationals would love to be able to manage something like this.
They just want access to the grain for their overall operations.
No doubt. I mean, there's an incentive for them to do something like that, right? So that's why...
They move people in here to manage it then, potentially.
Yeah. That's why we had that one rated fairly low. Very good point.
When you say volume trade, you mean how many farmers are bringing the grain in there to it?
Absolutely.
And then the supplier relationship would basically be, basically again, with the farmers bringing their, where they're selling the grain off to?
Yes. Yes, exactly. So I guess there's two ways in which you can have a supplier in this case. You can have a supplier being you have a direct relationship with the grower, with the farmer, or you can have a supplier relationship with the local elevator.
You couldn't be in total competition with the local elevators all the time.
You couldn't, yes.
I don't think that'd work around here.
Yeah.
I mean, the flower mill's going to have some dedicated people there that are going to take grain to it.
Yeah. And they're going to be able to pay more for wheat than an exporter would, actually. Because they've got the flour market right there.
Right, here.
But, yeah.
Oh, I was just going to say too, Kurt, it's really interesting too, we saw from looking at some of the premiums paid by shuttle loading elevators are quite high. If you look at 80 cents a bushel, higher than that is. So that, you know, so that will be a decision that the grower will make, you know, where do I sell my grain? But that is a part of the volume trade though.
Might be a good outlet for those that don't reach the premium, you know, they might.
Sure.
They don't meet what?
They don't meet their premium grade.
Yeah. Yeah. Up there. Absolutely. So from an operational standpoint, we look at the facility, how the facility will be configured here. We're looking at four steel or concrete bins with 400,000 bushel storage in this case. We're also looking at upright storage costs, being it steel or concrete. Looking at $5.50 a bushel being for steel, $7.50 a bushel being for concrete. And Clayton, we can also look at the next point here, the linear trackage and switch requirements in this case. We're basically talking about the fixed cost when we're talking about facility configuration and the linear tracking switch requirements here. We're looking at land's going to be required, it'll be about 50 to 100 acres in this case. Costs, or land costs, there's $2,000 for dry land, or $5,000 for irrigated land. Linear foot, in this case, we're talking about 11,000 to 15,000 feet. This is as opposed to a loop track, because we found that a loop track would require more than 100 acres of land in this case. So if we went with the, just not going with the loop track, we're looking at 11,000, 15,000 square feet is what we need for this. And we need switches, a mainline switch and three industry switches in this case. So again, these are essentially just to be our fixed cost for this operation. Our next slide is, now we're getting a bit more into the day-to-day costs, if you will, sort of the operational cost of an elevator in this case. We have it broken down by the handling expenses. On the far left here, we have, you know, the grain, grain cash prices, for example, shrink, moisture, degradation, et cetera, et cetera. And we're doing it for corn and wheat. So each one of these factors is what we took a look at in terms of what is going to be the cost of operating this particular type of investment in this case. And our variable cost here comes down to five, nearly six cents a bushel if we look at it from a corn perspective, and more like four cents a bushel when we look at it from a wheat handling, a wheat operational cost in this case. Salary in this case, we're again looking a little bit more at our fixed costs here. So we have our variable cost for the most part on the far left here. And we have our fixed cost on the far right here. Salaries, benefits, maintenance as a percentage of the facility cost, insurance of the facility for that matter. So we're looking at a total fixed cost of $970,000. And on a cost per bushel basis, we're looking at 12 cents per bushel in fixed cost to run an operation like this. The latter part here, we have the positions that would be involved here. Merchandising managers, operations managers, logistics supervisors, elevators, advisors, assistants, accounting, things of that nature. So now we're looking at, and we're just kind of breaking out the salary section at the very top here. We've provided more detail in this section right here. So that 575 that we see at the very top here, we break that out and you can see where, how we've come up with the 575 in that case. We found this to be a very interesting slide. I don't know what you guys think about that piece right there. Any thoughts you might have on what may stand out to be a surprise to you? Or you just think, hey, that's right on the mark, or never even thought about it?
On your moisture loss on your bushels, where it says like on the force, 41%? I mean halfway down, right there, 44 cents.
0.04.
Four cents a bushel.
Oh, four cents. Yeah, 0.04. Okay.
Yeah, that would be very much. I thought it was 44.
You thought it was 44.
That's way high.
Hey, is that popcorn?
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be four cents, almost four and a half cents as well. And that's, I think that's where I figure's cost there when it comes to the difference in the corn and the wheat in that case. Our corn's a little bit more...
It's harder to manage.
Yeah, exactly. You know, five cents a bushel and our variable cost for corn, four cents a bushel for our variable cost of wheat, and 12 cents a bushel for our fixed cost. I'd also like to say is that clears the Caribbean or what is the Mississippi?
It's entrance.
Okay. Clears the Caribbean, right? Okay, now, there's something here that we want to take a look at. It's, we have what we call a base model. And then we also have a model that we can look at this in a very pessimistic way and a very optimistic way. The optimism comes into the volume, right? Sometimes the volume isn't there, some years, some years it is there for that matter. So that's that volatility that we're talking about, you know? So because this is a volume-driven type of a project, we use our base model in this case. And arriving at our base model numbers here, we've taken a look at all of the, all of the, all the counties in the area in this case. All the counties in the area. There's a very top section here, guys, just all for wheat. And we'll jump down to corn down here a little bit later here. But let's focus on the wheat portion right here. And what we have to do is we have to take a look at how much, how much wheat and corn is exported out of the state. Because that essentially becomes what we're going to use to determine that will be, I should say that it's going to leave the state, but could potentially be exported out of the country for that matter, right? So we're trying to get a feel for what is the available volume that we have in this area, right? So we came up with some figures and with some input from Carolyn here, we did some readjusting of these numbers in this case. But we saw that there was like 23% of the product, 23% of the wheat grown in the state leaves the state, okay? Leaves the state by rail for that matter. But we made some adjustments to this and says, well, let's make this, let's go a little bit higher. Instead of 23%, let's say 33% of wheat in the state leaves, okay? So now we're trying to get our arms around how much volume that we're dealing with. We know how much the state produces. We know how much of that product is exported. And we're just going to sort of apply that to some degree to this area here, okay? So we took it up another level. So we're saying 33% of the wheat produced in the state leaves the state, which could be an opportunity for an elevator, okay, for the export market, okay? So in doing that, we, again, we were able to take a look at all the counties here in this area. We were to take a look at what their annual shipments might be, okay, based on about 33%. And we're looking at, we're also kind of look at their storage, what are their capacities? We get a real good feel for how much capacity that is in these counties in this case. Now, we're having to make an assumption in this case, that in the case of Stafford County for that matter, if it was able to get, or if it was able to get 50% of the market share, if it was able to extract 50% of that market share, so it could be exported and leave, which is kind of an aggressive number.
It's 50% of what the calculations are for what is exported. It's not 50% of the overall number, just to just be clear on...
That is true.
Okay.
Yeah. You said that very well. You said that very well. It's 50% of what could be exported, not the entire... Say that again. You said it better than me.
It's calculated as 50% of what you estimate to be shipments leaving the state.
Yes.
Not 50% of overall production for the county.
50% of what is leaving the state. That is correct. That is correct.
So that was part of my question last week, knowing that we may not have as much in Stafford County that is leaving by rail currently. We don't have the facilities here currently, even like the elevators aren't shipping out just on, you know, five or seven load. Like in the old days, you know, Kansas Co-op here would have loaded out a few rail cars right here on this facility. It's not even hooked up now. So Stafford County may currently not have as much leaving the state by rail, even not considering shuttle loading facilities. So that was part of my question last week was using the assumption of how much is leaving the state by rail as an estimate of how much is available for export and how much that might be, I don't know. We might look at the considerations of Stafford County slightly differently.
We did.
And that's where you have taken the assumption from 20% up to 30%.
That is correct. That is correct. That is correct. And of course saying that, you know, we're not going to get all of that wheat in this example for this facility. We won't get all of it, but if we get a big portion of it, in this case 50% of it. And in the other counties, we're saying, we're looking at their market share. We will be getting 5% from these counties above and 15% from these counties below here. We're going to be able to come up with what we believe is like a four and a half million bushels of wheat, based upon the market share that we're able to extract and based upon the amount of product that is actually being shipped today. How much can we get of that? Is that, is that clear? Clayton?
No.
And we did the very same thing for corn as well. Corn, we looked at, we look at this by counties. We look at how much corn is actually being shipped out of the county for that matter. That number was different though. It wasn't the, we didn't use a 33% in this case, we used a 27%. So for wheat, we did 27%, for corn, we did, we did 33%. For corn, we did it at 27%, exactly. Again, with the same mindset here is how much, how much of that market share can we get from these areas? Pratt, Ford, Reno counties for that matter, different.
Could you back it?
Different.
Yeah. So is the bottom one corn?
The bottom one's corn.
So you say that we produce almost twice as much, or 25% more wheat than corn?
No. No. What we're saying in this case is that you are, you produce more, you produce more corn and wheat.
But like on here, it says 2.0.
That's what could be exported.
Oh, that's what could be exported?
Yeah. It's the 27% of what could be, that's leaving the state, right?
Yeah.
Right. So I think when we looked at the numbers, I think we saw nearly 4 million bushels on average over the last five years. This county has produced about, it does about 4 million bushels a year on corn. On wheat, it does about, I think it comes like 2.8, I think it's 2.8 million bushels. I have a value, maybe I just can't remember. But no, you definitely produce more corn in the state, but it's what is being exported. That's what, that's the market that we're going after, the export market, I consider, the domestic. That's what, that's the market that we're going after, the export market, not the domestic market. And you export more wheat than you export corn. So we're trying to get a portion of that wheat and a portion of that corn.
Just to make sure I'm saying this correctly or thinking this through correctly. 33% of shipments, not of, not of the global market share. 33% of shipments is the base that we're working from. And then we're taking 50% of that 33%.
Right. For first.
As available for this, this particular facility.
Exactly. For that first effort.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So it's really, yeah, it's not a majority of the market share by, or what is produced overall by any means.
Oh, by any means. And by any means. And again, you know, the great state of Kansas produces a lot of wheat and corn. But it leaves the state. And that's the best market that we're going after, what is leaving the state. So in this case, so we arrived at 4.5 million bushels for the wheat. And we're arriving at 2.6 million bushels, 2.7 million bushels for the corn. And this is just the base model. So we have some, let's go into this right here. This is where we started to look at the competition that we're going to be faced with. A really big, good indicator in terms of the volumes we're going to be able to get and in some cases the value. So what we can see here is that this green dot represents Stafford County. That's where we are. The red dots in this case represent the country elevators in the area. And the other blue dots represent the other shuttle loading facilities in the area, okay? So in a 70-mile radius, we have about seven shuttle loaders, high-speed type handling facilities. So what we're looking at is that in this area here, we're able to get the 50%. And then this area right here, you can see, in this case, we have country elevators there, but we also have some elevator competition in that area also. To the west, to the east rather, we have those that are in the Hutchinson area, which should be much larger, larger ones as well. And to the far west, we also have some that are very large, further, further west than us in this case. So what we had to do in this case, we had to do a couple of different approaches to this. One, we had to look at what is called a concentration index. How concentrated is the competition? And based upon the method that we chose, it came out to be a very concentrated market, meaning that there are people or there are players or there are those in the marketplace that have power. There's a lot of concentration. There's probably two or three firms in this area that have a lot of, a lot of power. In fact, we use it as an index that the Department of Commerce uses when they're making the decision whether or not somebody can merge with another. Because if you get too many big guys merging, you have this situation where you give too much power to someone else and you don't give enough power to the supplier in that case. So the Department of Commerce uses this index to show if this number reaches a certain level, we probably will not allow that merger to go through. This number is like a 2,200. Once you get into like 4,000 or 5,000, there's fewer mergers that are allowed to take place in this case. So we, so to make this short, we see a high level of concentration and power in this particular marketplace. We also looked at what is called, what we call a five forces model as well. So we kind of look at the other competition, other threats to profit in this area as well. And I won't go into that in detail, but it just kind of gives us an idea of where does the power lie within this marketplace? Is it with, is it with the suppliers? Do the suppliers have power in this case? Is it the customers? Do the customers have power in this case? Is there a threat of new entrants coming into this marketplace? Or the threat of other substitutes and things like that? So we want to look at these four particular areas here to see where the power might be or where the threat might be that might end up taking some of our profits away. So we did sort of that type of analysis as well. Todd, you have the menu on your forehead on this one.
No, I don't.
Yeah. Okay, this thing, this thing, yeah. So what we did here is that we provided what we consider to be a stress test, right? Looking at corn, the variables of corn and wheat in this case. In this case, we looked at, and this is the base model, which we saw a little bit earlier. That base model in this case, 2.6 million bushels of corn that we have available for this, 4.5 million bushels of wheat in this case. If we want to get very optimistic about this, now that number goes from 33% up to 43%, okay? If we're able to get 43% of those shipments going out of the state, then that number goes up to 2.9 million and 4.9, nearly 5 million bushels in this case. If we want to get a little pessimistic about it, instead of 33%, let's go down to 23% in that case, right? Let's take some of it off in this case. We're not too friendly about what's going on here. So that number comes down here, almost to 6.5 million bushels in this case. So the base model, we're looking at 7.2, which is what a lot of our analysis has gone on. A very optimistic view of this project, meaning that we're going to get nearly 8 million bushels. A very optimistic view. And Kurt, a very pessimistic view in this case, we're looking at 6.5 million bushels in this case. So we have to look at, again, what's very important is how often we can turn these bushels, right? And most of the industry discussions we had in this case, you guys really like it if you're turning that elevator over in this case. We're looking at somewhere between four to 10 times you want to turn that elevator over, right? That's one of the great things about, about trading is that you have options to either store or either to trade. But if you're going to definitely trade, because you have that fixed asset, you've got to turn it over. You need to do it four to 10 times in this case. Close. Pretty much say we're there, 3.6 if we want to round it up in this case, Kurt. And 3.9 an optimistic view, pessimistic view, not quite getting up to that four turns that you need to be successfully mitigate or reduce your average fixed cost. In this case, shipments, we used to talk about shipments, export shipments, right? How many times are we going to ship the product out of that? We look at it on a per month basis here, one and a half times a month. So we need to get something, a shuttle loader, a green shuttle loading facility, shipping product out at least once a month. Optimistically, 1.6 months, 1.66 per month. And a pessimistic view of 1.37 in that case. That is the base model. What's your bottom? The bottom one right here, this is, this is actually when we started looking at this from a 23% and 17% level. I probably should not have put this one in here. But for the sake of discussion here, this almost gets down to like, if we weren't able to, you know, the number, the figure I gave you, like we're going to take 33% of the exports or 32% of the, 30%, 32% of the crop is being exported or leaving the state. This value down here is that what if we are only 27% for that matter of the exports we're leaving the state? So it's kind of another sensitivity analysis that we're trying to do. So this one is like, we're saying, hey, we can get more or more product is actually from Stafford County is actually leaving the state here. And this one right here is a little bit less in that case. That would be the difference in the two. And we applied some base optimistic and pessimistic view to that calculation as well. Chair.
Your bottom ones, bottom numbers are bigger than your top numbers.
Can we just eliminate this one? This shouldn't even be here.
Okay.
It shouldn't be here. Uh huh, no. I see. I see what's here. Okay, if we, I think what we did in this case is that we took, this is being the bottom one here, Todd. I think we looked at this one in this case and said, actually, if we were going to take it up to that, this is where we're going to get more of the crop that's being exported out of the state. This is the one, this really should be our base test right here, okay? Again, going back to that 33% number that we talked about a little earlier.
Yeah. And so the top would be the 23%.
It would be.
The bottom would be the 33%.
Exactly. We flipped them here. This is the one that we're basing our base model off of right here.
Just.
Which is more aggressive.
So I can kind of more fully process the scope of things. When we say of the shipment market, what we know leaves the state in rail shipments, what portion of that is, what is that portion of overall production?
So if we have, if we have four point, if we have four point, let me take a quick look here. Let me give you the total production number here. Okay, we have four point, we have 4.2 million bushels of wheat and 6.9 million bushels, excuse me, 6.9 million bushels of corn. So 4.2 and 6.9 in this case. So we're talking about 11.3 million bushels roughly. Okay? So if we have 11.3 million bushels.
In Stafford County alone.
In Stafford County alone. That's given five-year average in this case.
Okay.
And if we go back to our shipments here from Stafford County, we're looking at 4 million of that. So on a percentage basis, which is like 35%.
Which makes sense. We're not consuming wheat in Stafford County, most of us. I mean, other than the mill, it's all, it's all somewhere else.
The hard ground tend to skew or.
Yeah.
Numbers more than.
I don't know how much they use, maybe a half.
I'm sure you could find that, yeah.
Yeah.
That would.
The world could tell you.
And some of the wheat could very well be going to other mills in the state as well.
Where's the closest southern mill? Which town?
Does it make first one happen? Oh, not McPherson. Selina.
ABM has one. It's still quite a ways away.
Yeah. Does that clear that up?
Yep.
Carolyn, there.
It does, yes.
So we're taking this bottom model here and looking at it from a base and an optimistic perspective in this case. We look at the total bushels in base at 10.8, optimistic is 2.3, 7.2 is the pessimistic. Terms per year again, 5.4. Again, we're trying to get, we're trying to get that four to 10 turns per year. This is what we're looking at here and calculate some shipments per month. So we're going to take this 10.8 number and we're going to use that as our number that we're going to use for our income statement in this case, okay? So in our income statement, we're looking at volume of 10.8 million bushels in this case. And we kind of increase it about 2% assuming that we're going to get some volume increase over a 10-year period. The 10-year period is what we've been using for the most part as. It's somewhat of a, of a break even. It's sort of the horizon that some firms will determine whether or not this investment, something they want to do. Do you want to have it paid back in five years? Do you want to have it paid back in 10 years? It really depends on the risk preference of the firm in terms of what they want to choose. A lot of multinationals, five years is probably about all they want to do. Other private type, private type organizations, they might go a little bit longer. I've seen in some courts even go longer than that for that matter. So it really depends on the risk preference or the policy of that, of that organization in this case. So in this case, again, we're starting at year one, which is our base model level in this case. A volume of 10.8 million bushels. We move it out to as much as 12 million bushels in year 10. So then we start looking at our gross margins. And these are the numbers that we were able to get from, well, these gross margin numbers fall right in line to what we were hearing from the industry in this standpoint. Gross margins is anywhere between really like 15 to 35%. Really varies, kind of a wide spring, but we're putting the gross margin in this case of 20 cents in this case. Handling costs, again, we're able to get this from a number of different of the interviews we had. Net margin in this case, really, we kind of have to, net margin of 3.6%, which kind of speaks to some of the normal margins that the grain guys operate on. This is not, which makes it a really volume-intensive type business. I mean, most businesses with margins, they small, they really rely on volume to make their, make their profit in this case.
Once you take off your handling costs, off your gross margin though, it should be, like that first one should be 16 cents. I mean, unless you have some other costs figured in. Yeah, sometimes it doesn't quite work that way.
Sometimes it doesn't.
What's the other cost?
We could have the transportation cost coming in there for that matter, which is going to, we've kind of rolled this into our gross margin in other some cases, or in this case.
So your gross margin is like that first year, you're saying 20 cents a bushel?
Yes. Yes. And we're saying over a period of time, some assumptions, pretty close assumptions we're having, it should really be a little bit. It should increase a bit.
The price of commodities would increase, you could sure expand your margin.
You sure could, absolutely.
It's very hard to expand your margin right now.
It is. It's very difficult. And if we were to look at the pessimistic view, we could probably see that as well.
Yeah.
Whether it shows itself. That's a good question. So we're looking at net margins that are somewhat skinny, I would say. But that is the business of gray handling. We see that on corn as well in terms of the gross margin. Again, these numbers are really aligned with what we were able to learn from some of the interviews that we've had.
There's a little more margin in corn than there is in wheat.
A little bit more. Not bad. We went from 3.6 to 5.3 in this case. And also, there's always an option for that elevator to do stores as well. You have an option to be, you want to store it or you're going to trade it. What we found is that there's a mix typically that usually about 65% of the time you want to merchandise your product, 35% of the time you want to be able to store your product. It really depends on what the censuses are in the market at the time, right? If there's a carry market and the market's willing to allow you to carry the product for a period of time, then you might have more of a storage type of plan. But from a merchandiser's perspective, particularly those that are managing the several elevators, they usually look at that mix of 65, 35%. Stores versus, trading versus stores in that case.
So from the producer's point of view, when he hauls that in, would he have the option of paying you storage or just selling it right at that point that he delivers the wheat or corn in there?
The latter. I would say that.
He's going to get disappointed. When he delivers it, he's going to get paid for it.
He's going to get paid for that.
He doesn't have the option to say, hey, well, wait, what kind of storage are you going to charge me or anything like that?
Well, I guess in practice and theory, you could do something like that. I guess that's the arrangement that's going to be between whomever's going to merchandise it and whomever's going to, whoever's going to raise it in that case, right? But it's been my, it's been my experience in merchandising is that. But it's been my, it's been my experience in merchandising is that I'm probably gonna buy that from that person, and I'm probably gonna, you know, carry that holder for myself, for some other trading opportunity.
So the storage could be on somebody else's table, or-
Yeah, exactly.
So you have your total net margins, what's the SG, what are those two figures there?
SG and A stands for sales in general and administrative, in many cases overhead, right? All those expenses that goes into sales, your general administration type expenses. Again, that could be going back to, that could be going back to this area right here. That would be SG and A.
And the next line?
The interest?
The other one.
EBITDA?
Yeah.
Okay, earnings before interest and taxes, depreciation. So, when we look at the, the net income, and this is what's gonna feed back into our net present value model here, we wanna, we wanna take a look at, these are the expected cash flows that we can receive from this operation. And what we're essentially saying is that year two, or year ten is somewhere out in the future, we have to discount it back to what it can be equated to what it means in a present value in that case, right? And, so we could realize this one point four eight fairly soon, but the expected cash flows after that period, they could be increasing, but we need to, again, bring it back to today's value, and not look at it as tomorrow's value in that case. So, when we take a look at this case right here, here we have an example here of, let's say we have a private investor, and they're gonna assume a hundred percent of the capital expenditure in this case. And we have two options, one being steel, six point eight million dollars would be the capex for that, and concrete would be the twenty million dollars of expense for that. And if we look at the scenarios, whether we look at the base model, an optimistic model, or pessimistic volume model scenario, if we look at it from that perspective, we can look at what our net present value is gonna show, show us here. So we can see growing positive somewhere probably in that tenth year, perhaps even off of, maybe going into that nineteenth at that matter. An optimistic view gives us a, at fifteen-year period, we can see it definitely going to be a positive, positive for the investment. That's from the very optimistic view. However, when we take a look at the base model and the pessimistic model, and we don't see it where, based off of the income statement and the other values that we've chosen, chosen here, we just don't see it becoming a positive investment. Definitely not until, definitely something after fifteen years. But, we can see something in the ten-year and fifteen-year if you look at it very optimistically. Concrete, which is a bit more of expensive investment than steel in that case. And in this case, what we find is that we can start seeing concrete becoming positive net present value for our investment around year fifteen. Maybe a little bit more, maybe year fourteen or something like that. Now, let's say, for example, the county subsidizes with a five point eight million dollar subsidy. And that subsidy in this case could be the land value, that subsidy could be the trackage, or the fixed, some of the fixed costs related to our investment. We look at, we look at the land costs, and we look at the trackage and switches and things like that. We're looking at that roughly being about a five point eight million dollar subsidy in this case. So, there we begin to take a look at steel and concrete again, and we can start seeing with that, we start seeing, under the optimistic model, we start seeing a positive payback, probably some, sometime in the year eight, or the year nine, of ten definitely. For the base model, we can start seeing some type of a payback in this case, positive payback, a positive net present value, I should say, around that fifteen year. And we go concrete, again, optimistic, we're showing some very positive net present values in this case, just not seeing it as we would like it to be on the base, on the base model. And if the county decided to subsidize even further here, we can see in the bottom tables in this case, we're able to see that the base model does show a positive net present value in the year, year, year ten. An optimistic, it very well could happen much sooner than that. What are your thoughts on, what do you think, do you see something like this?
I suppose it may be better than that, but-
In terms of, would it show some, probably, yeah, five-year, what you're holding?
Yeah. What do you feel like the, like Bartlett and the bigger grain companies, that have a facility like that, what do you reckon, I mean, those are facilities that are probably gonna last for twenty, thirty years. I mean, do they, are they happy if it pays off within ten? Or they want it to pay off in five?
They're usually around that five to seven.
Yeah.
Did you talk about the idea that some of those bigger companies have a network and may view it a little differently than we're looking at this as a standalone investment?
That's, that's makes some point. Yeah, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the guys are, are working with a network. A network that will allow them different storage opportunities, different trading opportunities. In the case of Bartlett, they have an operation in Mexico that is really devoted to receiving the output from the facility, it's in Great Bend.
Perfect.
Yeah, in Great Bend, right? They were able to pay that facility off for four years.
So Wind River at different times has brought corn in and then shipped it out, you know? They, they trade more than just exporting.
Yeah, Wind, Wind River was really an interesting situation, because when that ethanol plant showed up there, they were able to do a lot of import in the corn, turn it, turn it into ethanol, and then shipping it out. So they were using that facility even in a different way. So, so their mix, yeah, their mix was, is different, which really, but the interesting thing about Wind River Grain, they were very, very good people to work with, by the way. When they started this, those things weren't in place. They developed later on, you know, the ethanol plant came later on, when they started shipping feed lots that came later on for them, right? But-
Turbines came later on.
Came later on, exactly, you know, so, but yeah, I think when we look at a lot of the multinationals, they, they have this network effect, which we can't quite see how they're making the decisions based upon the fact that they could be storing here and, and trading over here, and arbitraging in this area. And that, and those change depending upon what's going on in the marketplace, right? And they're getting some, probably some really good freight rates as well, right? Because of that network effect that they have. So they may, in some cases, and this is going back to my own experience of trading, of merchandising, you may be willing to take a, a loss in this area, because you see this really huge opportunity over here, right? And, and that could very well be happening as well. We can't, our model doesn't show that, because our model doesn't show the network effect, which we're kind of blinded in that case in terms of what those management decisions might be, because you have, you know, a number of elevators to operate with as opposed to one out there.
So where you guys did this study, this kind of helps Carolyn out, as far as if she has a Wind River or some other company that she's looking at, you can take these numbers, which they'll be able to- have a better idea of what their expenses and stuff like that are with- Probably what they're looking at is what we think are bushels, capable bushels, that they would get, and what their competition would be, but then basically everything else they'll punch in their own figures.
They would.
So their deal might look totally different than ours?
Potentially, potentially. Here, here's the thing about that as, as well, is that this becomes a starting point, more than anything else, right? Now, I think Carolyn has more information to have, had that discussion that she may not have been able to have before. All they were telling us is that, I'm telling Carolyn in this case, is that we're looking at your area, and now we've decided to go somewhere else. Correct me if I'm wrong, with no, no other feedback, you know?
Right, I don't have data, specific, I did see some on a table at one point, but I didn't get to keep that, you know?
Right, exactly, exactly. So I, I think things like this become a really good starting point, a good discussion point, you know, to, to maybe further clarify why this decision was made, or how, what needs to be changed or adjusted, or how would they change or adjust these numbers that make it fit for them? So that's where, that's where we sort of see that in that case. So, what we're saying here is that we really don't see any sign of evidence. The grain density is, is one of the biggest issues that we have in this area. We have the density, the competition, I think those are things that tend to work against any study for that matter, or any justification of that investment. A subsidy of eleven million dollars would kind of close that gap of grain shortage. In short term, we do see some things going on in the export market that might reduce the demand for corn in the future here. When I say short term, I'm talking about the next year or two. We've seen some export numbers that don't look really positive for exports. But we all know that that, that is not a static situation, that changes for that matter, right? And as such, we see it in that way. What we see, really a profitable volume of the grain, looking at eighteen to twenty-five million bushels. I think you get to eighteen to twenty-five million bushels, and I think if you can get a ten-year payback, you're probably right in the ballpark in that case. That could be an opportunity, as we talked about earlier, about a complementary business that has some higher profit margins and lower capital requirements. For example, we did some work, in this particular case, this happens to be a warehouse here locally. This is Kansas, Kansas' operation here. So we're looking at this, and, and this is the United Warehouse that we went to visit in, where we're in Wichita, Wisconsin, right? So we'd be looking at something right around this side. But we looked at some of the financials for Kansas in this case, we were able to extrapolate and understand that they're getting about thirteen percent of the profit margin on their warehousing activities and such. This is, you know, public information, you can find that by looking at their financials in this case. Potential activities, sales of fertilizer, feed, agricultural chemicals, seed, convenience store, petroleum could be opportunities here. So in this case, you're looking at a capex of anywhere to three and a half to five million dollars for a seventy-five, seventy-five to a hundred thousand square foot facility in this case, which is more of this size here. Which is something that obviously exists in this area in this part here. So this could be a potential type of an investment. Where we, frankly, where we struggle with this is what, what would be the products that we would run through it? These facilities, Todd, if you remember, we went to the United Warehouse, what was really key for them is to turn that inventory, the Coca-Cola business that they had, the cans, these, you have to really store, that's where you make your money off of, your in and out charges, your relatively small storage costs, your out again, you can do it again, right? If you just use it for, for storage for that matter, that's when you look at, looking more at what we look at the Garvey Warehouse. Remember that?
That was almost kind of a distribution, where they just got the, got the loads of lumber and then shipped them out.
And shipped them out, yeah. And they often didn't, they often stayed there for a little longer time too.
Yeah.
So the storage aspect is not as profitable as the turning aspect of it. So we're looking at, we're trying to think of what could be used in this warehouse that could be turned quickly. So it'd have to be something that would be used locally, that someone would want, bring it in, keep it for a short period of time, and take it back out. And that's where your charging becomes more important, because you can charge your inbound charge, your storage bound, and your outbound charge. You can do that a number of times, you make a, you make a pretty good business there. But that's what we, we did, we did struggle with that piece in terms of what locally, other than what is currently here. Fertilizer, feed, chemicals, things of that nature. And this is where you've got to be part of the third party of the justice piece there. So, that, that in a nutshell, is what we were able to arrive at. Again, I think one of the big considerations, again, is the volume, another huge consideration is the network. I think those are, I think those are two big issues there. The supply chain is very important as well, that being the country elevators and growers, the farmers in that matter. You need to have that supply chain well in place, I would say, or just very good relationships within that from the grain origination perspective. So the supply chain, extremely important, volume, extremely important. And understanding and being a part of a network would be very advantageous for any, for so long.
I don't know quite how this can be incorporated, but it's still, I don't know, Eve probably thought about this, but, I mean, we got local elevators making eight or ten million dollars a year just on storage alone. Could we compete with that? That's why I asked you the storage question.
Oh.
Kansas go up, this growth, or netted, eight to ten million dollars for years and years. And I mean, ninety percent of that's probably on grain storage.
So, but that sounds to me like, though, they're making that money from the farmer, the farmer's paying that. So would the farmer be more willing to sell, you know, right?
Right.
And not, not only not pay the storage, but completely get a higher, I mean, there'd be a lower basis, right?
I would think there'd be a way to compete there, yeah.
I think there's more of a farmer mindset there.
Yeah.
That's just gonna have to change.
They're hedging.
Yeah, you know, more of the younger guys are selling more crops before the crop is ever planted, as far as they get the better price when they deliver it, and they don't have to pay storage. Or instead of paying four cents a month, if they're wanting to hold it, sell your crop and buy it back, they're gonna trade. Then you don't have to pay for the storage.
So you're saying it's a generational?
I think so.
For sure.
There's some older farmers that think that you need to, that you need to be holding the crop in the elevator at all points, in case things turn bad.
Yeah, I see.
They're paying, the elevators are charging twenty-four and five cents, so if I hold a bushel of wheat there for a year, with five cents, I've got sixty cents in storage.
Yeah.
And a bushel of wheat that's worth, you know, is worth four dollars.
There's a lot of, a lot of that goes on, and that's where they're making their money, is on guys that do that.
I see. Yeah. Any, any idea in terms of, is that fifty-fifty, or are most of the guys doing that? Ninety percent of the guys are paying the elevator the store for them, or, I'm just curious, how do you feel about that?
That'd be a good question, but I wouldn't be surprised if it wasn't fifty-fifty.
I don't know if it's that much. I mean, the last time I talked to the guy at Great Bend, where I do the majority of my, that commodities, you know, selling, you know, getting them, getting your commodities priced, they, he said probably less than thirty percent of farmers at Great Bend go up.
Or, or-
They do what?
Basically, I'll sell any product, or, I can't think my mind-
Forward pricing?
Yeah, forward pricing.
So there's-
Contracting your corn, contracting your beans.
Okay, okay.
There's some of them that are forced to, but-
Yeah.
I'm curious, how do, how do you handle that?
At this point of the year, I usually like to have about sixty to seventy percent of my crops sold, of corn, before I ever even get it put in the ground.
Okay, so you're hedging it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, sometimes I go higher than that, some, but usually I try to do sixty, seventy percent. Cause we've already passed, unless this flood and drought deal, you know, comes about, you know, in Iowa, and Illinois, and Missouri, we've already missed our opportunity to get good prices on corn.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the way the merchandiser would see it is, where is gonna be his best opportunity to make, to make money himself, right? If he sees that, yeah, the market is allowing me to carry this product, sure, I'll, I'll take it and I'll carry it.
Yeah.
But if you wanna pay me storage, I'll, I'll weigh that as well, right? Cause the market will, market will tell you whether or not you need to sell it today, or you need to store it, right? Depending on what they carry in the marketplace. Depending on what they carry in the marketplace.
That's.
But they're, they're in the game, they want to turn multiple times a year. That's where they, that's where that business model, that's what it's based on, right? So.
Sixty-five percent of the time at least.
They're not going to want to just store two million bushels, they don't even have that much, you know, it's not very many bushels in the scheme of things, right? So.
That's a good point.
Would, could they, could they take in grain that they haven't actually purchased? They can still ship it, they just have to have warehouse receipts for wherever it's being shipped to. Is that right? Okay.
And like, some of the feedlots, you haul to, if you haul corn to a feedlot, you know, you haul it in in November. By December 31st, it's going to be priced. They'll allow you to store it, or, you know, hold it there for just a month or two, but then.
You have to price.
Yeah, and once you haul it in there, you can't take it out, it's that, we're holding it down here.
Yeah.
I mean, once it's there, it's there, they give you a month and a half to watch the price and sell it when you want to.
Do they not charge storage for that?
No.
Really? Yeah.
They used to sell on that ten-month deal, do they do that anymore?
I don't know, I never got any money on that.
I, I haul corn to the feedlot and they sold ten percent every month for it. And they take the average of all the elevators and had a nickel on two.
Todd, would you, which is, that's interesting. It's interesting that they would have knew that and not charge storage on something like that.
On the grain, on, on like feedlots?
Yeah, on the feedlot piece, right? Because, so who has the risk in this case, right? It's like both of them are assuming the risk to some degree, right?
Yeah, yes.
Because it's, it's unpriced.
Yeah.
They would have the risk, wouldn't they? The feedlot?
I'm not.
Yeah, I know you have the risk, though. You're putting, you're, you're putting your corn there at the feedlot and if they're, don't wash them moisture and your corn turns brown, it's your corn.
It's your corn.
Because they have a body, yeah.
Or if the price goes down, it's your corn at lower price.
You got your corn there.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe what makes that work is that both of them have some risk in this piece.
Yeah.
Both, you know, the grower at the feedlot has some risk in that case. And, and I think that's the, the situation for, for most elevators, even for shuttle train loaded elevators as well. You know, who's going to take the risk? I'm going to sixty-five percent of my time, I'm going to trade it, thirty-five percent of my time, I'm going to store it. And how that will dictate itself or play itself out is going to be really what's going on in the market price and your level of risk tolerance.
Yeah.
But again, I think, um, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work on something like this. The final document, we'll have to figure out how we want to distribute that to you, Carolyn, but at this point, it's, it's about a forty-page document at this point. You tell us if you want to have it pared down a bit more.
What is a forty-page document?
The study. The full, the full study.
I'm nerdy enough, I will actually.
Is that right? Yeah, we get, again, we get allotted to the market aspects of it, who has power in the marketplace, the market concentration, we go into other type of, um, other financial analysis as well. Because we have the variables of volume and the variables of price, um, that's what makes it, uh, that's why we do a lot of stress test or sensitive, or, or sensitivity testing because those variables could go one way or another. Over eighteen-year period are only one of the best. What would you think is a good investment period? Would you say is ten years? Is that too much?
I don't believe.
Well, that part, that's the, that's the operating business, that's not the county.
It is, it would be.
But if you put up grain bins there at your farm, how quick would you want to pay for it? I mean, when you real, when you think about putting up the facilities, it's going to last you thirty years.
They paid for themselves really quick.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd say they paid for themselves in three to five years.
Yeah. But have you been happily with ten?
On my own storage.
Okay.
What?
What, have you been happy with ten?
I can live with it, yeah.
Well, there's, there's that stuff, the network, the other factors. It might have depended on your desire to manage tax liability in a particular year or something like that, you know?
For sure.
I don't know.
You know, because I, I, I can remember merchandising grain. This would happen with Cardeal all the time. I was with, with General Mills and we had elevators in a number of different places. And we'd be trading with Cardeal in a certain area, and we know they were taking a loss in that area. We just know it was, because there's no way in world you can buy and sell and trade at these levels and make money. There's no way. But we didn't see what their whole network was doing. Right? They were willing to do something here because they could make up for it over here. And they could force, sometimes they could force grain going in certain, just certain directions just because of the pricing mechanism. They were able to do that all the time. And that's what would be, is hard for us to capture in this piece right now. That's where the multinationals, or MKC for that matter, would be very helpful in that sense in terms of how do they, how do they view an investment as a part of their network? And, and not just a standalone piece.
For sure.
And then some of them are interconnected very much with a particular multinational, even if they themselves aren't.
That's a very good point.
Like Wind River is very connected to Cardeal.
To Cardeal, absolutely.
So, I mean, yeah, how I look at this, like you said, it's a starting point. It's a more concrete conversation I could have with one of those potential occupants. I would have, sure, I would have liked to have seen less red there, but I think there's several other factors that, of course, you can't account for here. And, you know, I would have liked for that, especially the five-point-eight, to be kind of the place where we see a lot of, a more clear scenario that, that seems advantageous. But even at eleven, I don't know. Where I'm going with this is I'm looking at what kind of federal programs are, are available. I don't think there's any way in the world we can meet the deadline for this year's application. There's one through U.S. Department of Transportation that has a July fifteenth deadline. And when I look at the kinds of things that we would need to have to be competitive, we need to have the land, we need to have the track engineered and cost estimates of what that would actually cost. You know, you need to have agreements with businesses, whether that's the grain or like a warehouse, which I think would, you know, United Warehouse, when we went there that day, they said, you know, if you progress in this, we'd like to stay in touch with you, okay? So, um, you know, that might be that, that other business that could feed into this and, and will make that payback look different. This particular grant application has a specific cost benefit analysis you have to do. And I haven't gotten into what that exactly entails yet. I don't know if I'm capable of doing that, even though I'm a trained economist. It may be outside my pay grade. But, you know, I would look at that kind of stuff, getting K-dots, buying in on it. You know, I've told K-dot that, you know, I've looked at this, I've asked them about, okay, are you setting in your own set of, of projects from K-dot? Or can counties individually? Well, the answer's kind of both, you know? They may have some specific projects that they're kind of prioritizing, but we can also send something in. And if they were aware of it, they might also try to, um, I mean, they also have rail money that can be used for this type of project. It might be something where they put in a piece of match with it. But again, these things aren't going to happen by July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. It's really probably looking at twenty-twenty, which might not all, I mean, I don't know. They keep talking about putting more money into infrastructure from the federal, you know, to talk about an infrastructure bill, probably going to programs like that. It might not be a bad thing to have to wait longer for, applying anyway. But there's another thing I've, I have learned just a little bit about recently, that VNSF has a program where they'll certify sites. So making sure our site, if we were along a railroad, that the qualifications that they look for in, in a site that they serve would be a, that, a good thing to do, but that's not going to happen by July fifteenth either, so.
That would be a good first step.
But all of this, I think, helps though move toward that. I mean, they would certainly, if we were doing a cost benefit, having an independent analysis that feeds into that would be a very.
That's a starting point here, right? Would, would you consider, um, would you consider doing a complementary type of business first before moving into a larger investment in that case?
Maybe, I don't know. I, I guess I had, I had processed before that what our bread and butter in commerce is around here is grain. And it makes sense to use what you've got in volume as your anchor. But maybe that's not the best way of looking at it. Maybe it is a, a smaller business that has higher margins and wouldn't need all of the infrastructure all at once.
Just, 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 just a thought.
And I guess also, you know, I know they're looking at millions of dollars and that gets daunting, but this build program that I'm talking about is a nine-hundred-million-dollar program. And the award minimum is a million dollars in a rural area, five million dollars otherwise. And I think the average is somewhere close to twenty million. So a five to a eleven-million-dollar request might not be outside the realm of possibility.
Possibilities. You know, I, I, and I think in, in these investment decisions, sometimes it's not as much, in my thinking, it's not as much as the initial investment amount is how quickly you can get it to be profitable.
Interesting, yeah.
You know, if, if, if I, if I invested twenty million dollars and I can get it paid off in two years, but if I had to make a ten-million-dollar investment and I could get it paid off in twelve years, I'll take the twenty million. Much larger number, but my payback is much faster too, right?
The rate of payback. Another, a, a different, a different angle on a similar concept is when I looked at the, you know, when we did the grocery store project, the differential between doing something at the old build, you know, what we were looking at is, do you do a grocery store in the old building? Small format, blah, blah, blah? Or do you build something new? Well, in the old building, we'd have a million dollars wrapped up in it easily with just the equipment and modest modifications, it wouldn't have been free. And then you spend three point eight. The differential is basically two to two, two point eight million, which is in the scheme of a twenty-year, though. The difference in salaries, the difference in taxes, the difference, it's, the two-point-five-million initial investment is not the story. It's, it's, the, the twenty-year difference in salaries is, well, I think it was around twenty million, the difference.
Really?
Yeah. Over the course of twenty years, the difference in salaries alone was something in that scope. So it makes the initial investment seem less.
It's daunting.
Daunting.
You're probably getting low blood sugar, this is getting off the post.
Well, thank you for your time.
Oh, again, it's a good number.
Again, you have, uh, you have the presentation and you have the, the overall summary as well. We'll soon be getting another document to Carolyn. If you want to have something that you could look at.
Need to go to sleep.
I was going to say, maybe watch your cheese plate, but maybe the Royals, that might be better. If you watch the Royals play, yeah.
I've tried that too many times.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Your word.
We have.
Yeah, we need to get that out.
We have a road crossing permit from, for Carmen Schmidt. He wanted to board underneath the road up there, just south of Radium. Yeah, they're moving, they're moving it from the flood ground. They're going to do the water rights across the road. Permit number is four-two-four-dash-twenty-nineteen.
Second?
Yeah, I moved, we approved the permit number four-two-four-dash-twenty-nineteen.
Motion in the second, all favor. Aye, if motion passes. Does everybody need to sign or does it need?
Everybody. And.
You will not be reading next week.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Never mind. Are you thinking at all about going to KCCA or?
You mean here? No, I probably don't go. All right. Pardon? There's sprinkle on the most stay yesterday, but that was about it.
How about that nine-four when Burton County got a little?
I got a little sprinkle on the sidewalk, looked out thirty minutes, it was dry, and I went down there eating parts. They're like, yeah, we got ninety hundreds.
I know. I think Burton County might have a pretty good one.
We'll adjourn.